Ladies and gentlemen, we will find more seats. We'll get started in about one minute. And again, if you'd like to get a bundle of water or some refreshments in the back of the room, please help yourselves. All right, wow, you quieted it down so quickly. Welcome each and every one of you and our candidates to the Palmer City Council Candidate Forum hosted by the Rock, the Palmer Rotary Club. My name is Cheryl Mativa, and I'm a member of Susitna Rotary Club and the past District Governor of Rotary Alaska District 5010. Our area that we serve in Alaska is from Nome to Juneau, from Fairbanks to Kodiak, so it's truly the entire state. Plenty of communities you can't go into and find a Rotary Club. And candidates, I thank you so much for joining us this evening. Additionally to that, I would like to thank Mike sitting behind me, Big Havish Radio. They are doing live web streaming for us this evening. So round of applause for Big Havish Radio. We are here today so that you, the community members, have an opportunity to learn more about our candidates and ask questions. The Rotary Club of Palmer is a service organization and has organized this forum as a community service. Rotary International, along with local Rotary Clubs, are non-political organizations, and we do not endorse any candidate or take positions on political issues as an organization or as individual clubs. Here's how our forum is going to run tonight. The candidates have been provided three questions ahead of time and will answer the questions in a rotating manner. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to give their responses. Our timekeeper, Stephanie Allen, will hold up cards letting them know how much time remains, and a bell will sound when your time is up. Stephanie, would you please ring the bell? You cannot miss the Rotary Bell. Candidates, please finish your answers promptly once you hear the bell. Audience members, there are no cards on your tables, and you are encouraged to write questions for the candidates on these cards. Palmer Rotary Club members will collect the questions for each table, and I, as your moderator, will read the questions and will allow all candidates to answer each question. You will have 60 seconds again to answer those questions. We will do our best to read all questions if time allows. Our goal is to end approximately 8:00 PM this evening. And again, as a reminder, my friends, there are cookies and refreshers at the back of the room. So candidates, take just a moment to collect yourselves, and we'll begin. All right, so John, I'm going to start with you. And would you please introduce yourself to the audience, and you have 60 seconds.
Fantastic. Hello. Josh usually helps me out there.
Testing, testing.
You better start with 60 seconds. It usually takes me about 60 seconds to say hi, but my name is Johnny Alcantara. I've lived in Palmer area most of my life. I've lived in the city for a little over 20 years. After living in Eagle River, Juneau, and Solvatna, my wife Rosetta and I and our four kids moved to Palmer and raised our family here. I've been on the council about two and a half years, turned myself a centrist pragmatic voice on the council. And I love Palmer. It's a great place to raise a family, it's a great place to be. And like I said, I've been here most of my life in the surrounding areas, and I look forward to the discussion tonight, and I thank the Rotary, Cheryl, Josh, and all the others for having us here. So I look forward to your questions, and I look forward to the questions that we've already been provided. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Nathan, just so you all know, there's one microphone. I have one, and our candidates have one. So they're going to be passing that microphone back and forth. There'll be a little bit of pause here and there. So Nathan, if you'd please introduce yourself, you have 60 seconds.
Starting now.
Would you like to go ahead, Nathan? Go ahead, Nathan.
Yeah, my name is Nathan Bradford. I've lived in the valley most of my life. My wife and I bought a house within the limits of Palmer about three years ago. I graduated Colony High School, graduated University of Alaska Anchorage. Very proud being an Alaskan and living in Palmer. I work at Matneuska Telephone Association, and yeah, just looking forward to the questions, and thanks everyone for coming.
And Victoria Hudson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Hudson, and I am fairly close in before you as a candidate for City Council. At 30, I'm dedicated to bringing a fresh perspective to our community. A big thank you to the Rotary Club for hosting us tonight and fostering this dialogue. If I'm successful, Palmer residents can be assured I will decide issues based on what the facts substantiate, not simply hearsay, propaganda, or unprudent speculation. I believe all signs of any issue need to be considered, utilizing every instrument at the county, the council's disposal, from community input to onsite evaluation. Citizens of Palmer as well as all the valley can rely on me to use my strong moral sense of what is wrong and what's right before I cast any vote on their behalf. I have spent endless hours doing my research and meeting with many local business owners and landowners in our city to find out what is happening, what this city needs, and asking for ideas of how I can make a positive impact. I have a deep understanding and appreciation of the value of services community, and I'm so grateful to all of you for this opportunity.
Nathan. Andre.
My name is Andrew Jackson. Well, let's start off by saying, first of all, I did not receive these questions in advance until now, so what I have to say and answer these questions are going to be basically my experience in this community since 1998. And I've been part of this community for a long time, and I continue to love this community for the organization I belong to is the Matsuburu Freedom Foundation. And with that foundation, we've been to bring a lot of social justice funding events to this community that help aid businesses in this community. So I love how this community goes deep. My campaign just didn't start 10 minutes ago or three months ago. It started in 1998. Many of I've met during that time period, so I was really campaigning then, showing them how much I love my beloved community by being out there, by talking to people, by helping people, by joining people, by fixing tires and what have you. So I've been around quite a while, and I thank you all for this opportunity.
Andre, thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, we've made the decision, since Andre did not receive the questions in advance, we're going to bypass candidates those pre-addressed questions, and we're just going to go into regular questions that I have and then questions off the floor. I think that's the fairest for all concerned. Are you all comfortable with that?
Sure.
Of course you are. Great, thank you. And Nathan, thank you so much for your understanding. Just threw me off just a little bit. I'm coming back. All right. So we're going to start, I think what we'll do, Andre, since you have the microphone, we're going to start right with you. And this is not a question that was given in advance, so you're all on the same playing field. What is your position on annexation? Do you believe it could positively affect Palmer's future? And would you support moving forward on previously conducted annexation studies the city has completed?
I do believe this is important that we do annex. And one thing I'm concerned with with the annex, for those individuals that live in that vicinity, they have addresses for us Palmer, they can't vote in Palmer. And I think that's not fair to have people that live in the Palmer area be annexed in area and not be able to vote in civil elections. Next, I think with the annex, does kind of create an opportunity to get a tax base from that area, to expand our water and sewer to that area, to increase our revenue for our product.
Victoria, would you like me to repeat the question, or you can?
You can repeat.
All right. What is your position on annexation? Do you believe it could positively affect Palmer's future? And would you support moving forward on previously conducted annexation studies the city has completed?
If our current infrastructure is not fully supportive, then adding projects to our current budget and annexing land may not be best. I would work to ensure that all Palmer citizens have the opportunity to be informed and knowledgeable about new projects and their opinions considered.
Thank you.
The short answer is I do support an annexation. When you look at a town like Palmer, we have a lot of sprawl, we have a lot of neighboring communities. You go up in line, you go down Palmer Fish Hook, you go up to the View. These are people that shop here, pay our sales tax, and there's a really good case to be made that they should be supported by the revenue that they give the city, as well as giving the opportunity to vote. But if you read the most recently published study they did on annexation on the city website, the issue they highlighted was less than favorable public opinion about the annexation. And so I do think that it has the potential to be really beneficial to these communities, but I also think that it is on the city to foster that trust with the community, to make sure that it's something that everyone actually wants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Annexation obviously can be a bit of a sticky widget, but the reality is that people that live outside of Palmer sometimes don't even know they're outside of Palmer. They're like, what? I don't live in Palmer, but I'm around here by four corners. I'm not hearing any questions. I'm not hearing other spots. They don't even know if they're in the city or not. We provide service for a lot of people, but don't forget that of our tax revenue, 85% of it comes from sales taxes. So my buddies that live up in Soke Stone and Lazy Mountain in the Butte that shop at Fred Meyer Cars in Palmer and shop at other places in local businesses, they're still providing some of the revenue. But we need to take a good look, not just blow the dust off the old studies. We need to be serious about it, take a look with the new council and say, is this something we want to proceed with? And I think there could be value there, it's just something that's going to take time, and we're going to have to bring it to the people to make sure that their needs are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you pass the microphone to Victoria, please. Our next question. The construction or repairs of Palmer's library has been a contentious issue, with differing opinions on its cost, contents, and overall necessity. What is your position on the library project? And how do you plan to address community concerns regarding its budget, long-term benefits, and the role of a play in Palmer's future?
First off, I'll start off with, I think a library is very important in a community. I also want to start with that election statistics showed that only 6% of our voters turned out to vote on the $10 million bond last year to finance the new library. Despite claims that 80% of the town voted for it, only 6% of the town's voters casted a vote. So that's 5% of the town that agreed that we needed to have a $10 million bond for the library. So I do agree that there needs to be a library, and even making a new library, and that's great, but I don't know how much of our city's funding, up to $10 million, should be put into that library when there's a lot of other projects in the community that need to be finished, like our roads and our new wells and whatnot.
Thank you, Victoria.
I'd say we need to get it built. As long as we wait, as people know, if we have anything, materials cost, they go out. We're not building this by ourselves. We have a barrel to help us out, to build this library. With the infrastructure of the library, there's been a lot of controversy about banning books. Personally, I think those books should never be banned. It's a library collection of works. So I am concerned with that it is a built thing, that it needs to be regulated, that let the parent society of the child have access to it. Because if we start banning specific books for a library that's designed for the community for this area, what's going to happen is you'll ban books to other with different heritage, Native heritage, African American heritage, and I don't think that's right because this is a community, this library is designed for the community.
Thank you, Andre. And yeah, so if you could pass that to John, please.
I see the system right here, it's a good one. Yeah, folks, let's be real, 17 months since we got it collapsed, or 19 months, excuse me, we had it collapsed. We had the vote, 80% of folks said, let's move forward with a potential $10 million bond. We want to build an $18 million library. We've already trimmed it down a bit. Former mayor Delanda Johnson, state representative, was able to get us $5 million in last year's budget, and she's like, hey, what's happening with this thing? We need to move forward. We took our time, we addressed a lot of the issues. Some of the issues are still being addressed now, insurance money and other things. Everything takes time. The former project manager, I know nothing ever goes as quickly as folks would like it to go, but it's time to move forward with going to our library. I want to see that thing completed by the summer of '26 and not be something we're talking about three or four years from now. And thank you.
Thank you, John. Nathan?
My answer is going to be pretty short. How it feels could be pretty well covered. We were, this wasn't really something that was optional, it wasn't a remodel, it was something that needed to be done, and it's taken quite some time since that need arose. The city drafted an RFP, got competitive bids, and decided to move forward with some plan, with some budget, and I think that it's just time that they get built. And beyond that, I don't have an opinion.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, because we did pull the original questions that were given to candidates in advance, we do have time to take questions off the floor. So if you have one of those note cards filled out, please hold it out, and one of our Palmer members will pick that up for us. While that's taking place, candidates, I have our first question. Nathan, we'll begin with you. Matsuburu Assembly members now have the option of showing if they are a Republican, Democrat, or non-affiliated. The question I'm asking you is, are you a Republican, Democrat, or non-affiliated? And will you do the same ordinances like the borough?
I would say non-affiliated. I consider myself libertarian, and as libertarian as I think is reasonable. And so I consider myself center-left on some things, center-right on other things, but generally speaking, very oriented on small and meaningful government.
Okay, thank you. And John?
Yeah, thank you so much. Like 60% of Alaskans that are registered undeclared are nonpartisan. I'm registered nonpartisan. I don't think party affiliations have a place in city council. I think city council is about what you do for the city, not what you do for a party. I don't think we should worry about when we're on city council, what's the Republican Party think about this? What's the Democrat Party think about this? That's a wrong mindset to have when you're trying to address the issues of the city. So I don't think it belongs on the ballot, and it's okay, and the borough wanted to do it. Party affiliation really should have little, if anything, to do with whether you support a person running for city council, because city council should remain nonpartisan, and I'm happy that I'm registered as a nonpartisan. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And next, we'll go to Andre.
When I ran for this campaign, I purposely did not accept donations. I purposely did not have a part of the donation attached to me. And then I go out to seek candidates that are Republican or Democratic Party to support them, because it's a nonpartisan position, and I support that. I do echo John that it is important that you're not influenced by you owe anything to a particular party affiliation. Now, some of you, I'm sure, have already looked it up, that I am a registered Republican, but then since 1998, it just didn't happen overnight. So that being said, I don't want that as an influence, because I can't cross party lines, and I don't always vote for a party. And so my whole thing is that when you're in a nonpartisan position, you should stay that way and remain that way.
Okay, I'll be that duck out. I am a hard Republican, and I'm conservative, and I will stand on that. As a Christian household, I don't feel like there's any other leg to stand on. When I'm looking at city council issues that have to do with the city, I feel that it's good to look at both sides of the issue, and I personally, except for a few things, I really think it's what's right and what's wrong, and there has to be some moral backing behind that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andre, we're going to go back to you with this first response. What infrastructure projects do you think are most important to moving our city forward?
I think the first thing that we need to do as an infrastructure is deal with ethics with them, the city council and the police department. We need to have a strong stand that if you take a vote to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and also bylaws that govern the city, that you should stand by that. The infrastructure, what I think we need to look at is we need to look at our roads, which is important, and our airport, which is also important. Now, I don't fly, I don't use the airport, but I use roads every day, and pretty much sidewalks too. So I think the infrastructure, we need to maintain what the citizens want, which has had been, the roads itself. And so we continue to move forward as a city, we need to look at building a better infrastructure when it comes to plumbing equipment and having plumbing tubes in the city.
Victoria, give me one moment. Are you able to hear well on the back? Is this good? Perfect, thank you so much. Victoria?
Okay, can you repeat the question?
I can.
Thank you.
What infrastructure projects do you think are most important to moving our city forward?
I do believe that there's a lot of necessary infrastructure projects that we need to focus on. First, one of those projects that we need to focus on is the wells. We cannot continue down the path that we're on right now without fixing the wells or adding more wells, because we're adding on more residence homes and more businesses. Also, there's parking issues downtown that we need to focus on, and we also need to work on upgrading the streets and getting some paved streets and roads.
Okay, if you'll pass it to Nathan.
I think some of the longing for infrastructure would be to really focus on finishing the paving on some of the roads within city limits that are not paved, have not been paved, remain unpaved. They require enormous amount of maintenance to keep them drivable. The other thing that came up a lot when I was talking to people toward the north was, especially people with kids, would love to see some attention dedicated to the public parks and playgrounds. So cleaning those up, making them more interactive for kids, more attractive to kids, so that they have some safe place that they gravitate to. I think that's huge. Beyond that, I think, you know, the city's done a good job. I live in city limits, obviously, when it snows, a cloud shows up quick, when the grass gets long in the park, a lawnmower shows up. You know, beyond that, I can't ask for much, but I do think that there are a few things that we can focus on that are easy wins.
And that's the real crux of being on city council. It's really nuts and bolts, getting things done, water and sewer projects, other type of projects. And we talked about the biggest infrastructure project we need, speaking of a place our children can go to, is our new library that we're going to get built here in the next couple of years. We got bone-rattling and very dangerous crossings here, fireweed in the streets. We need to fix railroad crossings, partner up with the railroad, fix some of those things. And I wouldn't know if we call it infrastructure. I don't want to see a paradise and put up a parking lot, but I do know parking is a huge problem, and we do need to address that, whether that's in the infrastructure piece or whether, you know, we have to just plow a piece of land somewhere and create some parking. But there's plenty of projects that we're doing constantly, and the library is my number one.
Thank you, John. All right, Nathan, we're going to start with you next. I might have melded two questions here, so listen carefully. Who do you consider your primary constituents? Are they limited to city limits? And what value do you add to the council?
I think my primary constituents are not limited to the people who live within the city limits of Palmer. I think as we touched on earlier in the annexing question, Palmer has, I think, five square miles-ish within its limits, and we are, you know, hopefully a hub for a big surrounding area. So while those people might not be able to vote, they pay taxes here, and I think that it's worth considering in any way possible, be that some sort of outside research or, you know, unfortunately, because they can't vote or participate, there's really nothing else that you can do, but I do think that it's important in any way that we can reach out, that we are reaching out to the neighboring communities and making sure that Palmer is the hub we want it to be.
John?
Michelle, can you repeat the question for me?
I sure can. Who do you consider your primary constituents, and are they limited to city limits? And what value can you add to the council?
Thank you. My primary constituents are the 5,100 registered voters and their families in the city of Palmer. Yes, we have lots of folks contributing from outside areas, but that's the five square miles of residents that we need to deal with. The value I add is a lifetime of relationships throughout Alaska. I can go to Juneau, get into any legislator's office, Republican, Democrat, doesn't matter. I know the governor, I know people, I know how to address the issues, I know how a capital budget works, and I bring a lifetime of experience in emergency management and finance, and I'm willing to work with anybody regardless of political affiliation and move the ball forward for the city of Palmer, and I'll continue to do that.
Thank you, John.
I just wanted... Hello? Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, can I go? No? Okay, all right. Okay. So I just wanted to kind of, I guess, like when I introduced myself, I kind of started with what I could bring to the table, but I just wanted to cover that again. So obviously, a fresh perspective. I'm not interwoven into a lot of the relationships of people with the city politics or even with state politics. So what I bring to the table is a fresh set of ideas and also a fresh set of relationships with people. And also, I will be able to talk to people and make relationships and really utilize everything to my advantage to go and see projects. And I also think it's very important that you have somebody on the council that is a good listener and that it has time to meet with everybody, and so, thank you.
Not only the city of Palmer, people, the individuals, but the businesses that are downtown, small businesses are not just individuals too, I consider them just as important because those people also are residents as well. One thing I think is important, definitely to make sure that these businesses derive the summer lines and the winter lines. And I do think that we need to continue to grow in the area, to grow. The city is still a small town, it's one of the beautiful small towns in this area and in the state, and we can still keep it small, but we also need to be reminded that these businesses are more important, because that's kind of what keeps up the infrastructure going. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre, if you will retain that microphone, we are going to start with you, followed by Victoria, then John, and then Nathan. With low voter turnout and recent statements that council doesn't need to engage the public for input on specific capital projects, how will you ensure and increase community involvement in decisions with great public impact? I sure will. That's a lot of... That's a lot of words. With low voter turnout and recent statements that council doesn't need to engage the public for input on specific capital projects, how will you ensure and increase community involvement in decisions with great public impact?
I think one of the things that we have done at the Robert King James Foundation is that our event itself brings life to divisions within the community, whether it be emergency situations or whether it be opioid crisis. So I think that if you're gonna make the decision, you have to be able to risk community outside of the voting issues where a lot of people don't show up to vote, but they will go to various different events. So I think encouraging people to get involved in the community is one way to do that. Thank you.
All right, Victoria.
The... Sorry, can you repeat the question?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
With low voter turnout and recent statements that council doesn't need to engage the public for input on specific capital projects, how will you ensure and increase community involvement in decisions with great public impact?
I think what's being talked about here is the consideration to remove such a landmark with the railroad tracks. And that was stated that it wasn't for the community to have input on recently, that that was something that the city council could decide on. And I think that any project that is that big, that affects our history, even events that are downtown locally, I think it's very important that the community come together and be able to at least express their feelings about the situation and to be able to come to the city council and also have a part in making those decisions.
And John? You're quick on your feet. Thank you.
So pretty quick for an old guy. Yeah, low voter turnout. Low voter turnout, I heard about the 6% in the bond. Wasilla recently had an election of 1.9% turnout. Not to cash shade at our neighbors, but literally less than 2 out of 100 people showed up to vote. I don't wanna ever see low voter turnout. I love everybody in this room and in this city to prove me wrong and have 20, 30, 40% voter turnout on October 1st, on Tuesday. I know that that's probably not likely. But I do think, I don't remember this thing about not getting some council saying they didn't need the public's input. I think we always look for the public's input. We have, unlike some places, two opportunities for audience participation in our council meetings. We give people two chances to come, address the council for up to six minutes in total and let their feelings be known. And some people do show up to do that. So everybody get involved and let's have more involvement. I'm all for that.
Yeah, Nathan?
Yeah. So professionally, I do something called market research. It's a fancy way of saying I field surveys. And, you know, people are busy, really busy. They can't make it to meetings, maybe they don't know when to vote. I mean, you know, we could argue all day about whether or not the illness is on them to keep track of those things, but the easiest way to get an answer is to ask. And I think when it comes to specific capital projects, there's a lot that the city can do in terms of third-party research and making sure that we're actually asking pointed questions about the projects that are coming up on whether or not we're gonna do them, how much they're gonna cost, how we wanna approach this. Waiting for people to show up is one way to do it, but I think it's much easier to just ask.
Thank you very much. All right, this next question, I will start with you, John, followed by Nathan, then Victoria, and lastly, Andre. John, how do you feel about trails and pedestrian-friendly connectivity?
How do I feel about it? I think it's fantastic. I hope that, you know, I utilize every trail I can, whether it's out here, Shane Wood's Memorial, or the trails out to the Butte, to bike out there and get a baked Butte burger. There's a lot of opportunity here. There's a lot of value in the fact that people want this nature. I love looking out at Pioneer Peak, at Matt Newscaut Peak, Byers Peak, whatever you like to call it, climbing Lazy Mountain. I mean, trails to me have a big impact in the community, make it more livable, make it more friendly for children. The railroad trail that makes down past Sheridan, any opportunity I could get to take my kids and now my grandkids out on a trail, I will take advantage of it.
Thank you, John. Nathan, how do you feel about trails and pedestrian-friendly connectivity?
I too love trails. And I think that one thing, I live in Brittany Estates, right over by the Tsunami Center. And one thing that stood out to me when my wife and I bought our house was, you know, we were asking on Real Estate, and why did the sidewalks end right there? You know, so I think a big thing for me is to dedicate some energy to making, well, seeing if the public's on board. But I think sidewalks would be huge, not only in my neighborhood, but in several of the neighborhoods in Palmer. One of the things that we struggle with is, you know, if the kids don't have anywhere to be but in the middle of the street, they will be in the middle of the street. And, you know, that's not only dangerous, but it really slows things down, especially in my neighborhood. It's a lot of through traffic. So I think specifically focusing on sidewalks would be huge for Palmer.
Thank you, Nathan. Victoria? Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
You bet. How do you feel about trails and pedestrian-friendly connectivity?
Well, starting with trails, we're obsessed with the trails. Every single weekend after church service, we, when it's nice out, we pack a picnic and we take our kids, usually be on the rail trail or the Matt Newscaut River Trail, and we go have a picnic with our kids on Saturday mornings. We like to hike the view and whatnot. So we're really into the trails. And we just love how safe the trails are here in the community also. The safety is a key thing for us with our children and that's something that I hope to help maintain here. And with pedestrians, I also agree that pedestrian safety is a huge thing to focus on and that adding in sidewalks or, in that case, focusing on infrastructure and just building up the city as a whole where it's at, I think that's very important.
Thank you, Victoria. Andre, how do you feel about trails and pedestrian-friendly connectivity?
Years ago, there was a sidewalk in Felton that really rarely got blocked out of the city. I took it upon myself to clear it to make sure that the students had a place to walk on. So the reason why I say this is that those trails and sidewalks are a great thing, but then also a concern that it's gonna cost more funding to maintain those trails. And we can include that in our budget because those trails are often off the road path and they're hard to get to. So you can have it and wait to be able to clean those trails, and they're nice during the summer months. But I like to walk during the winter months as well, but they don't always pile hard or maintained. So when we do get building the trails, we need to make sure that we can actually maintain them well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Nathan, followed by Victoria, Andre, and then John. So this goes back, my friends, a little bit to what we talked about earlier, and that is voter participation and lack of voter turnout. Like the borough, will you commit to provide a voter pamphlet to every registered voter? So Nathan, like the borough, will you commit to providing a voter pamphlet to every registered voter?
Yeah, I don't think I'll leave my 60 seconds. Yes.
Thank you. That was easy, eh? Thank you very much, Victoria. Like the borough, will you commit to providing a voter pamphlet to every registered voter?
Yes. I do, I think that's very important for us.
Thank you. Andre?
Now, he has to be the person that he'll get a pamphlet to every person? No. But as far as the city doing it, yes, I think that's important that we have a pamphlet to deliver to the individual, to vote yourself, as long as it's non-partisan. Thank you.
Thank you. And John, while you're picking up that microphone, like the borough, will you commit to providing a voter pamphlet to every registered voter?
Sure. I don't see any reason why the city council couldn't provide something like that. We're talking about around 1,700 households that would have to receive this. There are 5,100 registered voters, but a lot of combined households like my own. So yeah, you're talking 1,700 pamphlets, and I don't think that's beyond the scope of something we could provide. So certainly.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we will start with Victoria, followed by Nathan, then John, and last Andre. Victoria, what work experience or life experience do you have that will help you to govern and serve on the city council?
Well, I am a very dedicated mom and I feel like a lot of times that experience is actually very useful because I've taken that job very seriously. So just like hearing both sides of a situation when something happens and then coming to middle ground with my children, I think it's the same thing in city council. It's very important that you hear both sides of the situation, even if people are heated or sad or upset or happy, right, for their different opinions. It's very important that you hear both sides and then you come to the middle and you say, how can we do this so that everybody in the community benefits from this decision that's made?
Thank you. Nathan? What work experience or life experience do you have that will help you to govern and serve on the city council?
I think there's some less important stuff and some more important stuff. The less important stuff would be professional background in finance. I'm not a stranger to reviewing budgets and making sure that everything's kept track of. But I think the more important stuff is just, I've been here most of my life, I live in Palmer, I care what it's like to live in Palmer because I live in Palmer. And, you know, just being here every day, going to local businesses, using the local infrastructure, just being part of Palmer is a huge benefit when you go to do something like this. And I think that's really the most valuable experience anyone up here could have.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, thank you so much. The most important thing I bring is a lifetime round Palmer and 29 years of marriage to my lovely bride, Rosetta. And we raised our four children, two sons and two daughters here in Palmer. But I could try to squeeze in 60 seconds, my lifetime of experience. I worked in the Alaska Legislature. I ran the budgets for central emergency services and the Kiski Fire Department down in Kenai Crystal Borough. I worked for FEMA. And I worked as a government relations director for a dozen years. I also worked for the past almost six years now at the Don Young Alaska Job Corps Center here in Palmer, helping young adults ages 16 to 24. So I believe I bring a lifetime of experience to go along with my almost two and a half years on city council to the table. And I'll look forward to continuing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Andre, what work experience or life experience do you have that will help you to govern and serve on the city council?
Well, what I think to myself, years ago, in the eighties, I became a new president of the College of the University of Arkansas, as well as a chief photographer. Came to Alaska and I worked in the building construction. I was recently retired in the last years of a local drill too, as a equipment operator and worked at Prudential. I'm currently the president of the Robert King James Foundation. And I understand that Robert is an order, which is very important, to have some kind of order when we do conduct our business meetings. And when you don't have that, usually you have people that will have agendas and not follow the rules and things get out of order. So I think that you have the ability, I have the ability, because I work with different people at different areas, different aspects. And being with the foundation, I have the work with different businesses, different foundations, and different communities. And I think that really has a diverse asset. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Andre, I'm going to let you hang on to that microphone. We will start with you, followed by Victoria, then John, and then Nathan. Andre, what public safety issues do you think are most problematic to Palmer and what can be done to fix it?
Yeah, like you said earlier, there's ethics of the police department when it involves individuals. To me, it's kind of hard if you have a certain degree of opinion about a certain segment of the public that actually served that policy. I think that we're going to take a proactive view when it comes to homelessness, work with the health foundations and both other social foundations. I think that the departments, as well as the fire department, need to be more versed and get more information and equipment for the low-income kids than any information they can have to help the homeless people rather than approach them and not understand those type of behaviors because everybody does not behave the same in certain situations need to have. And I just want a person that's having some type of medical or mental issue with them.
Victoria, what public safety issues do you think are most problematic to Palmer and what can be done to fix it?
I think that something that has been brought up many times is the migrants and the homeless, as he also just brought up. I think it's very important that we put a positive plan in place to strengthen and enforce code and compliance. Vibrant City is one that is created by a civil community that has safety and security as its core foundation. And if we are gonna have code on the books, then they need to adhere to. And I think a big portion of that is our support to local law enforcement and also to the state troopers and also to fire EMS services. Thank you.
All right. John, what public safety issues do you think are most problematic to Palmer and what can be done to fix it?
Let's talk about public safety a little bit. The last three years, we've added three sworn officers to Palmer Police Department. We've added a few paid personnel to the fire department. We've gotta take a look at what we want to do as the city folks. I mean, 25 years ago, I was putting together multimillion-dollar budgets for central emergency services in the Kiski Fire. Neither Saldana nor the Kiski has the population base that Palmer has. And we're serious about having people if we wanna have that kind of protection. But I do think we need to address the issues and I think maybe further questions on the homelessness issue, just the general feeling of safety in Palmer. Not everybody is a big fat guy, 6'3", 270, and I realize we're gonna create a safety for everybody out there. So thank you.
Nathan, what public safety issues do you think are most problematic to Palmer and what can be done to fix it?
I think, not to revisit sidewalks again, the low-hanging sort of thing that springs to mind is helping kids not be in the middle of the street. That's huge in my neighborhood. I know it's huge in other neighborhoods in Palmer. And it's really rolling the dice when it's not necessary to roll those dice. And not separate issue, but not to revisit annexing. One of the reasons I am pro-annexation is being able to offer support for Palmer Fire, Palmer PD, and spread that support a little bit. You know, if you find yourself on the other side of the Connect Bridge or up Palmer Fish Oak or even just in Soapstone, you have to wait on the troopers to get there. And while they're doing their best, they have a huge area to cover and it would be huge if we were able to offer some support to the communities that are right next door.
Thank you very much. Our next question, we will begin with John, followed by Nathan, then Victoria, and then Andre. John, how do you feel about businesses impacting residents in downtown Palmer, such as parking and noise?
Yeah, we mentioned, I mentioned that earlier. We need to, as we get more businesses involved in Palmer, we need to do a thorough review of our parking issues. We have heard from folks and it's certainly real. I've been to Palmer L House on the weekends and seen Friday and Saturday events that have 300 and 500 people taking up every parking spot in Palmer. So as businesses come in, they need to adhere to the codes that we have on the books and look at, and we can look collectively as a community of do we want to build more places for our businesses, for people to have a place to park. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Nathan, how do you feel about businesses impacting residents in downtown Palmer, such as parking and noise?
I think that parking is a more complicated issue. I think we've talked a few times and a few of us about the geographic constraints of Palmer. Five square miles is not a lot. And when you consider, you know, agricultural, industrial, public... public, residential, once you have all that chopped up for different zoning, parking lots become really hard to find a spot for. So I think that that's a really complicated issue that deserves a lot of thought. I think that as far as noise is concerned, we have to find a way to balance supporting local business with making sure they're compliant with code. Because from my house, I can opt-in here. On the weekends, I can hear music and whatnot, and for me and my wife, that's not a big deal, but I can imagine if I was trying to put a kid to bed, it becomes a much more big deal. So I think just enforcing their codes that already exist is a huge step in the right direction.
Thank you, Nathan. Victoria, how do you feel about businesses impacting residents in downtown Palmer, such as parking and noise?
I think that there is a reason that the rules are in place, and the code's in place for parking for different businesses, and I think that it's really important that the city council hold firm to those rules that are already in place, and then we also help find more parking, like I mentioned earlier, for more businesses to come in and be here. I will say that I think it's really cool that we live in a community that we all feel so safe to go to the Palmer Ale House and enjoy a concert on the weekends. I think it's really cool that we enjoy a town and a community where we can have something like a hayfling, where we can all come together, and you hear kids running around and giggling and laughing and having fun. So sometimes, those can be really frustrating when I'm trying to put my kids to bed, but I try to remember that in other places, it's not like that. So I just really try to be thankful for that.
Thank you. Andre, would you like me to repeat it, or you've got it?
I don't have it, but I think it's a good question. Noise, to me, that's a live city. It's a city that's thriving, that's got some capability, it's got some excitement about it, especially if anything is happening all during the daytime, and businesses that are around should take advantage of the foot traffic, because a lot of times, they don't want to hit the foot traffic. So I do encourage businesses that are in that area is to open their doors up and take advantage of both the foot traffic. Close the parking, you know, that's a tough one, because we're so socked in as far as space-wise, and we want to keep the area beautiful and not really tear it up as much. I do recommend that we possibly have off-site parking, but the responsibility of transporters and back and forth, we have to be all who are the event culture is.
Thank you, Andre. All right, next, we will start with Nathan, followed by Victoria, then Andre, and lastly John. I'm going to take a moment here and say, oh my goodness, people, you have given me such a variety of questions. I am like going through these saying, this is amazing. So thank you for challenging me and challenging our candidates. Well done. However, Nathan, I decided to give you all the rest. Nathan, get ready, everybody. What makes Palmer special to you?
Sixty seconds is not a long time. I didn't grow up within the city limits of Palmer. I grew up on Wasilla, closer to Wasilla, and one of the things that my wife and I learned when we moved here three years ago was when you kind of grow up in between the two, you just think of the valley as the valley, and you just kind of assume it's all sort of the same thing. And then we bought a place in Palmer, and in the morning, we can go to Bagabon, or Wayzoo, or wherever we want to go, and at night, we can go to the Ale House, or any of the other local businesses that just make Palmer fun. I think Palmer is small, it's not crowded, you can get through it, and it hasn't lost any of that small-town charm. It's done a good job of supporting the local businesses, and it's done a good job of staying interesting. As small as it is, you would expect it to be a lot more boring, but it's not.
No, it is not. Victoria, what makes Palmer special to you?
Okay, I'll try to get this in sixty seconds. What makes Palmer special to me? When my husband and I were asked, when my husband was asked to move us to Alaska to expand the company here, we lived here and entrusted God to move here, and this has been such a healing place for our family. The relationships that we've been able to make with the like-minded people that are around us, the safety that our children have here to play outside and to play in the neighborhood with their friends, and the relationships that we build with people, the small businesses, I'm able to go down to like a market all the time and just buy fresh produce, and buy from a milk share, that's okay here, and support local farmers, and all of that, I just think is just such a blessing. We're very blessed to live here.
Thank you, Victoria. Andre, what makes Palmer special to you?
Many may not know this, but years ago, probably in the eighties, the Ku Klux Klan put a petition into march in the city of Palmer, and the city of Palmer declined it. And at that time, I lived in Anchorage, and when I heard that story, I said, you know what, I think I want to move to Palmer, because they have a unique characteristic to know that certain things are just not acceptable in our society. And that's one reason why I moved out here. Another reason I moved out here, I live in a community, in the States, where the mayor moved next door. A council member is next door, and another council member, two of these guys who live in my neighborhood, and a former airport commissioner that's been next to me. That never would have happened in a bigger city. So just being able to mingle with people, and they're just two common folk that I'll tonight pray with them, and that's a blessing that I have for this small community. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. And John, what makes Palmer special to you?
Well, what makes Palmer special to me is, of course, it's where I grew up, and we had the egg ranch out here in the outer Springer way, way back in the day. My father passed away when I was two years old, but people still remember, still remember Tota Mags. Palmer, when I come out of, when I go into church, Palmer Church of God, as the board of trustees president for them, I go to church on Sunday morning, come out on Sunday afternoon, and I just take a deep breath, look at Pioneer Peak, and think, man, week's going to be great. Palmer's where I wanted to raise my kids. Luckily, we came back here in two thousand and four to do that. Two of my kids now live in San Diego and Juneau, and life takes its twisted turns. Ironically, our nineteen-year-old son lives in Wasilla, but he named our granddaughter Palmer. So Palmer is as special to me as it gets.
Thank you, John. All right, our next question, we will start with Victoria, followed by Nathan, then John, and lastly Andre. Listen carefully, and I will speak slowly. What about controversial gatherings on city property? Do you think that is something that should be brought to the public before these events are held? I shall repeat that. What about controversial gatherings on city property? Do you think that is something that should be brought to the public before the event is being held?
My answer is that if an event is safe, happy, and healthy for the community, then that is an event that should be held in court.
Thank you, Victoria, followed by Nathan. Controversial gatherings on city property, do you think that is something that should be brought to the public before the event is held?
I think I'm going to demonstrate a little bit of my own ignorance here, but I think, I don't know the ins and outs of the process for getting an event approved in the city, but I have never found a situation where I'm driving through the city and I'm confronted with anarchy. So I think the city has done a good job in making sure that what's taking place in Palmer is, as you highlighted, safe, enjoyable, and I think this is one of those situations where the status quo is sufficient.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, thank you. I think we all regulate freedom of speech so much, but we have a process in place. We try to adhere to it. If some, I think extremely rare bad actors are out there and do something that is going to create controversy in the community, we'll have to address it, but as far as addressing it beforehand, and then I hate to take away people's rights and the interest of making everything as permitted and regimented as possible.
Thank you, John. Andre?
I said it earlier, I think maybe we have Ku Klux Klan, and I think that was a really good infrastructure the city of Palmer had at that time. And I think as long as it doesn't step on one's personal rights, it doesn't harm, and it doesn't intrude upon the love of the city itself. I think that the infrastructure they have now seems to work. It worked back then, and I'm sure they're going to continue to improve it, the city of Palmer, and these people that make those decisions. That they take the moral aspect of what's right and what's good and just for the community itself, and realize that it's not that you want to step on anybody's rights, you just have to understand that this is a specific and particular community, and we have to still adhere to that.
Thank you, Andre. Our next question will begin with John, followed by Nathan, Victoria, and lastly Andre. And feel free to take just a moment, because you're going to have to have three answers. What do you see as the three most pressing issues affecting Palmer today? John?
In our library, public safety, fixing infrastructure issues that we have.
Thank you, John. Nathan, what do you see as the three most pressing issues affecting Palmer today?
I'm going to steal a couple. I think public safety is huge. I think finally getting the library rebuilt is also huge. It's been quite some time, and I think that's important. Another pressing issue in Palmer, and maybe this is the valley more broadly, but certainly is true of Palmer, is that we've had a lot of growth in the past handful of years, but a lot of growth in areas like housing, and the medianest price of a house has skyrocketed over five hundred thousand dollars. You haven't seen the average household income grow at that rate. It's creating a lot of barriers for homeownership. Now, we've highlighted the geographic constraints. The residentially zoned land within the city has been highly developed, and they're building now Cedar Park is in its first phase, and that'll be huge. But doing things to make Palmer an attractive hub for continued development outside of Palmer is going to really help us increase supply and make living here easier for people that want to live here.
Thank you, Nathan. Victoria, what do you see as the three most pressing issues affecting Palmer today?
I think one of the big issues is supporting code and compliance. I think the second main issue that has been brought before everybody is getting some kind of agreement on the library, and I also think that infrastructure support is very important.
Andre, what do you see as the three most pressing issues affecting Palmer today?
I'm going to be honest, library number one. Number two, I want to get rid of this flat rate of water usage. Now, I know we've got residents here that pay five thousand gallons, use it, or use it. I think that's ridiculous, because my wife and I, we daily use twenty-five hundred gallons. The rest just goes for waste, so that's really unfair tax on homeowners. Number three, snow removal, or roads and airports can be started.
Thank you. All right, Nathan, we're going to start with you. Nathan, followed by Victoria, then Andre, and lastly John. Again, I'm going to need two questions here. Why do you want to serve on Palmer City Council, and why should we vote for you?
I chose to serve on Palmer City Council, or to run for the opportunity to serve on Palmer City Council. I think the main reason is kind of what I highlighted in a previous question, which was, having been raised in the valley, and I just had this sort of one-valley sort of perspective, and moving to Palmer, it became immediately evident that this was something special, and being here and enjoying what makes Palmer special makes me feel an innate obligation to continue to protect what makes Palmer special. So I don't have a ton of like public service experience, but I just, I did feel a calling to be involved, to make sure that Palmer continued to do the things that made Palmer attractive to me in the first place. I think that, I think that that's a valuable attitude. This is not the jumpstart of my political career. This is just me trying to give back to the community that I lived in.
Thank you, Nathan. Victoria, why do you want to serve on Palmer City Council, and why should we vote for you?
I want to serve on Palmer City Council because I think that I have a lot of really good ideas. I've met with a lot of local business owners and a lot of landowners, and I think that there's a lot that can be done in Palmer, even just here with the railroad crossings. I think there's just some really cool, different ideas that have come in through that, and I think restoring those tracks and bringing the train back in, I just think there's so many cool things that could be done here downtown, and I'd really like to be there to bring those ideas forward and help other people bring those ideas forward and really support that. And I think people should vote for me, because I'm a good person. I have great morals and values. I love my country, I love the city, and I love the people who live here.
All right, and next, that would be Andre. Why do you want to serve on Palmer City Council, and why should we vote for you?
Well, see, one thing, being a council member, you have to be an influence people. And I am proud to say in two thousand and three, I was able to receive the award of influence of the year. Now, I don't know what I had influence, but it must have been something very important for the city of Palmer to recognize that. And my service goes beyond just campaigning, because after all said and done, I would still be out there talking business and working with businesses, bringing events into the city of Palmer. We initially chose to go to Wasilla, and it did work out as well, because the infrastructure was a little bit different and hard to work with, so we found better to do what we do here in the city of Palmer, besides the Glen Mason Theater is one of the best theaters to have, to have indoor event. Secondly, I've spoken at various different meetings, city of a borough, and I think by being a participant on the outside, that's an influence, but I think it's even better for me to be on the inside to work with those individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. John, why do you want to serve on Palmer City Council, and why should we vote for you?
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl. I want to continue to serve on Palmer City Council. There's some projects that need to be completed. Library first and foremost, it happened nineteen months ago. It took a long time to get a four-three vote to even move forward as we have now. I was the person on city council that tried to lower the bond from ten million to eight million, was outvoted six to one, but I wanted people to know that we have other ways to get that funding, and we did get five million dollars from the state. I think I do a good job on council. I don't want to be on there forever, but I think I've earned another three years on there, and I think, given that time, I'll continue to work hard, I'll continue to advocate for Palmer everywhere I go, and I hope that everybody here gets out and votes on Tuesday, and let's have a big voter turnout in the city of Palmer. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, just so you know, ladies and gentlemen, we have three questions left before we go to closing comments, and we will start with Andre, followed by Victoria, then John, and lastly Nathan.
Say Andre. I think you're last.
Nathan, did I miss you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you did.
He started, he started, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you were the first. Who? I really missed out there, ladies and gentlemen, but we're okay.
I wouldn't have looked that slide.
It's all good. So, Andre, we will start with you, followed by Victoria, then John, and lastly Nathan. What would you do about the farmers in the annexation area? There are no guns in city limits, but there is a need to protect for predatory animals.
This state is a gun-heavy city, I think the guns are important, it is more important there's adequate training. I think the guns are important. I think it's more important there's adequate training and instruction to make sure that they're used wisely and kept nicely. Because we're around various of the law, I think it's really important to support that.
Thank you, Andre. Victoria, what would you do about the farmers in the annexation area? No guns in city limits, but there is a need to protect from predatory animals.
I also think it's very important that we support people to be able to arm themselves and protect themselves against animals. But I also think that it's important that these farm, the farmers, put things in place to protect their animals. And sometimes it needs to go beyond that, and I do support that.
Thank you very much. John, what would you do about the farmers in the annexation area? No guns in city limits, but there is a need to protect from predatory animals.
Well, I just agree with the two speakers before me. Has to be a way to be able to provide that. Kind of, you know, I'm trying to think of the predatory animals that exist and they're, you know, gonna be rolling around. But, but yeah, I have no issue with making sure that everybody can stay as safe as they possibly can. I might have to ask the folks on the Priest Farm or someplace what kind of animals they've been having to deal with out there.
Thank you, John. Nathan, would you like me to repeat the question? Okay. What would you do about the farmers in the annexation area? No guns in city limits, but there is a need to protect from predatory animals.
My personal opinion is that an exemption should be offered immediately. I think that that's very low risk. I don't think that it has a ton of overlap with whatever rationale came to be that the no gun in city limits will come about. But I think that as far as protecting agricultural land or, you know, your farm, your livestock, no problem with an exemption being offered for that, like immediately.
Thank you, Nathan. Our next question, we will start with Victoria, followed by Nathan, then John, and lastly, Andre. Bloomsbury Publishing just reprinted an eight-book series from children's division, young adult to adult. The request by concerned citizens has always been to move specific explicitly sexual books to the adult section. If moving books is banning, isn't that what Bloomsbury Publishers just did with eight books? Do you call this action banning, and why? That's a biggie. Want me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Bloomsbury Publishing just reprinted an eight-book series from children's division, young adult to adult. The request by concerned citizens has always been to move specific explicitly sexual books to the adult section. If moving books is banning, quote unquote, isn't that what Bloomsbury Publishers just did with these eight books? Do you call this action banning, and why?
What she did was say that my books aren't appropriate for children to read. That's what she did. She put the books into the adult section. If a book has, because you use some of the words, I will say pornographic material. How old do we have to be to enter a site that contains porn? We have to be eighteen years or older. So if a book contains pornographic material, I do believe that it needs to be an exception that children would not go in and just immediately see, pick up, check out, and read. If it needs to be available in the library, then it needs to be, like I said, an exception where children don't go into a room and see that. And it's great because at all Palmer library, the children's books are in a different room. So they don't need to be in there.
Thank you, Victoria. Nathan, would you like me to repeat the question?
That would be great.
It's a biggie, I know. Bloomsbury Publishing just reprinted an eight-book series from children's division, young adult to adult. The request by concerned citizens has always been to move specific explicitly sexual books to the adult section. If moving books is banning, isn't that what Bloomsbury Publishers just did with these eight books? Do you call this action banning, and why?
I would not call that action banning. I do think that limiting access is the first step on the grease handle. And I think that it should be done with an extreme amount of thought. So if the question is, is moving a book banning a book, I certainly don't think so. But I do think that when we start limiting access, we open ourselves to limiting access to all sorts of things. And I think that it's important that we do it slowly, if at all.
Thank you, Nathan. John, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I don't think.
Thank you.
I don't think what a private publishing company does as far as moving their books is considered banning. I will tell you, I left home at sixteen. I had ten kids. I was the oldest one in my family to leave home. All the students jock were stopped. They said, oh, dude, no, you mean you were the youngest one, right? I go, no, I was three months from turning seventeen. My brother left home at fourteen. Three sisters lived home at fifteen. Not every teenager is created the same by any stretch. I agree with my member here on my left that it's a slippery, slippery slope if you start talking about how we're gonna eliminate the ability for people to get access to reading material. I think it's, I don't mind what they did. I don't have any issue with them putting it in and they're creating an adult section. But I do think it takes a look long and hard before you start eliminating reading material for teenagers.
Thank you, John. Andre, would you like me to repeat the question?
To me, there's a difference between banning or moving. If you remove it out completely out of the library, that would be considered banning. But to place it, to move it to a different section of the library, to give the parents the option to allow their minor child to have access to it, I don't have a problem with that. But to put it in the section where the children should review it, yeah. To put it in another apartment library, no, that's not banning at all. Now, as you said, the same material is explicit, and it should be removed. I do have a problem with that. But you have to be really careful, like John, I've done one same day with David. Nathan's gonna say, I do agree with that, you know, it has to be, it's a normal type issue to deal with. But the most important thing is that the parents have the right to allow their child, primary child, access to the materials.
Thank you, Andre. This is the last question from the floor. We will begin with Nathan, followed by Victoria, Andre, and lastly, John. Nathan, as a candidate, it is natural and appropriate to highlight your talents and strengths. But can you share a mistake, weakness, or regret with us? What did you learn, and how did you grow through that experience?
I think if ever I highlight one weakness that I think is most applicable to what I'm running for here. I have a hard time not seeing both perspectives on a lot of issues. I find myself fence-sitting a lot, which is a good quality in some ways. You want to be able to take in points of view across, you know, multiple planes. But, you know, in a position like this, ultimately, a decision needs to be made. And I think that one thing that would definitely, would definitely be an area for improvement on my end, if given the opportunity to be on city council, is to learn a lot about decisiveness. And when the time comes to make a decision, whether that's a budgetary decision or a policy decision or a code decision, you know, a decision is going to have to be made. Regardless of the many perspectives, there can only be one decision. So that would be a weakness for me.
Thank you, Nathan. Victoria, as a candidate, it is natural and appropriate to highlight your talents and strengths. But can you share a mistake, weakness, or regret with us? What did you learn, and how did you grow through the experience?
I think that I tend to be a little bit too trusting of people. And I think that sometimes in doing that, it doesn't allow me to see the whole picture sometimes, or really observe what's happening. And so I think by really getting to know people that are around me and asking hard questions and really getting into a deep relationship with them before I trust them, it's very important.
Thank you, Victoria. Andre, as a candidate, it is natural and appropriate to highlight your talents and strengths. But can you share a mistake, weakness, or regret with us? What did you learn, and how did you grow through the experience?
Well, one thing I've learned that sometimes I get really emotional about certain things. I really have a lot of passion about certain things. I've realized that it's not personal, that I have to put my personal opinion aside and deal with the actual core of what's going on in a meeting or an event or an issue that's part of the community assembly. And how it came that is to understand about a vision order. It kind of put me in perspective on how to govern and be professional and deal with people's business. Thank you.
Thank you. John, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
So my father died before I turned two, so I learned most everything and inherited most everything from my wonderful mom. Intellect, political curiosity, love and respect for my fellow human being. But one of the things I inherited from her is impatience. And sometimes I get a little bit frustrated at the snail's pace of things that happen, not just at the city level, but the borough level, the state level, the federal level. Sometimes the grind is almost too much. But I think it's important to stay the course and stay through it. I wish there were times where I'd take a deep, deep helping of patience and just, you know, maybe not be as forceful as I am. But part of that's just the way I was raised, so I'll look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you, John. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, each candidate will have thirty seconds to provide a wrap-up. And we will start with Andre, followed by Victoria, then Nathan, and lastly, John.
All I can say is, no matter what happens in the election, I am still going to be the servant person of this community. And I can either be on this side, or I can be on the council side. Whichever side I'm on, my heart will still be in the city of Palmer. And I'm not just gonna go away. Maybe I'll get away. But at this point in time, I do not plan to use this opportunity only and campaign just this season, because my season is more than just today.
Thank you, Andre.
Thank you so much.
Victoria?
Can you do a question?
There is no question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good. Hey, just swing out of the seat, folks.
Okay, ending. We're ending, okay. Okay, well, I just want to take a moment to just say thank you again so much to the Rotary Club for putting this on. And I just want to say that in this whole campaigning process, I am just so appreciative of all the relationships I've built, all the people that have invited me into their homes and sat with me and talked with me. You guys have been so sweet, and I just loved all the relationships we've built. My kids have just really enjoyed this. So thank you guys so much for doing this, and God bless Palmer. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Nathan?
Yeah, I just, I'll do it again. I'll thank Rotary for putting this on and thank you guys for, you know, we already touched on how little time there is to dedicate to this sort of thing, and we're not even on the council and you're here listening to us talk. So that's fantastic. I love being in Palmer, and to be honest, at times I feel way too busy to be pursuing something like this. But I just feel an obligation almost to give back to Palmer in any way that I can. And if it's not this, then it'll be something else. So, thank you.
John?
Thirty seconds to close. That's gonna be tough. Thank you, Cheryl, Rotary, and thank you, Mike Molesky. Thank you, everybody, for showing up and being here tonight. And also, thank you to my fellow candidates. It's not easy to put yourself out there, to answer questions, to go door-to-door, to talk to people in the community. So I want to thank these folks for putting themselves on the ballot. Remember, we vote Tuesday. You can also vote tomorrow and Friday at Palmer City Hall. But make me proud. Let's get the fifteen, twenty, thirty percent voter turnout. And I hope you consider voting. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I want you to know, ladies and gentlemen, that, yes. As I look around the room, I am so proud. I love Palmer. And I love the fact that you've got this tremendous turnout because you care and you love your community. And I want to extend to each one of you, I know it's not easy. I served on city council in a previous life, and it's difficult. But you put yourselves out there, and each and every life you break is tremendous talent and intellect to the table. And you answered some pretty tough questions pretty rapidly on your feet. So ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for your candidates. And again, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you to the Palmer Rotary Club for hosting this event. Have a safe trip home.